All right, this is in the box, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Call story.
Yeah.
Sandra Zachary.
Here.
Here. At this time, we're gonna place allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're gonna pass down the sign-in sheet. I'd like to recognize our guests and thank them all for being here. While that's going around, we'll move down to item number five, which is new business. Anybody have any new business they'd like to discuss?
The only thing I want to bring up is the Hattaway County and Jonesville Development Authority. Uh, we have the nine men on this committee. I think we need to kind of start and see what we need to do on that, Dr. Clark.
Yes.
Uh, I do have some paperwork if any, if, uh, Clark, if you wanna kind of help with that. Uh, I've got paperwork down there if you need something. I'll make copies and give it to you on where we need to start. A meeting needs to be brought up, uh, to get this going. I figure, I don't know if they have their meetings in the daytime or in the evening. I presume probably in the evening. Just really get a hold of everyone and maybe start on that.
Same.
What you got?
Sam?
I have all but one person I can't think of. In, you know, I got Bill Cox, Randy Harrison, Rock country, Joe Kermit, Clark McClary, Gary Dunn, Bill Kermit, and Ralph Watt. Who did I miss? I know, and I haven't found my minutes yet, but I will get with Kermit, it's back in, uh, August. That's it.
Tim, you have any new business you'd like to speak on?
Got just a little bit, um. You know, basically, call volumes getting high again, it's getting warm, call volumes are coming up. We worked this weekend on traffic control for the fire departments, fires all over the county. I bet we had over twenty fires in three days. Several structures were lost, um, so worked on that. Immate counts mid-sixties, it's going up and down between sixty to seventy throughout the week. I think our average is sixty-three. Um, everything is running good out there. As we talked last week, you know, we had the, got the, um, Oklahoma State Jail Inspector's Audit Report back, and there was zero findings, um, of anything, which is huge. It's the first time, and Katrina, Katrina's went back and looked. It's the first time she can ever find anything, where we didn't have a, didn't have a write-up for anything. Um, hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll be having a meeting with, um, the Skode County Chair. He's asked to sit down and speak about holding their overflow. Also, gonna set up a meeting with the US Marshals about possibly holding their federal inmates too. They're looking for a couple extra ho- overflow facilities. Don't know if we're gonna qualify yet or not, but with that, with that back from the state, that should, that could possibly be good. We don't know. There's still some things that I think we're gonna have to do, but we'll, uh, we'll see what they say. Other than that, everything's running pretty smoothly.
We have the, back on the, that grant, uh, we've been telling you guys about. I had the grant writers send me an email in the state. Made a couple phone calls. They believe they have found enough information where we're not gonna have to pay anything. Still waiting on the finalized, um, paperwork on that, we've got to sign off on. We should know by the end of this week, um, on that deal. Had the guys out doing, obviously, it's that time of year, it's nice, had the guys out doing trash pickup. We've worked pretty hard here in District Two. Um, got a call on Airport Road, uh, get it took care of. We get a lot of people coming in and out of Airport Road, and we, we had those guys work Airport Road pretty extensively. We were utilizing the trailer that we've got at the jail, five-by-ten trailer that we got there, and every time we go out, we're filling that thing up, and my truck, and dumping. We dumped three loads of those two things last week, uh, just on Airport Road. We filled up two truckloads and a trailer load, um, in between the turnoff for Airport Road, off Highway Nine, and then getting to the end of the airport, Chamberlain's Fence on the airport. Um, guys did a really good job on that.
That they did.
We're, um, I believe that, oh, we're doing a water drive for, I'm gonna try to start doing that, uh, at the beginning of every fire season. Do a water drive for our fire departments, have people bring in water. Um, either drop them off at the chamber or the district barns. So if you guys start getting water dropped off at the district barns, um, those are for your fire, local fire departments in your district. And I'm letting the fire chiefs know about it, come pick that water up. So whenever you guys get water dropped off, y'all call me, let me know. I'll be sure that the chiefs know, or I'll take it to the fire departments themselves. Um, spoke with Kena Fire, Kena Fire got a, um, they got a boat last year after all the water, uh, after, after Kena flooded, and they ended up getting a boat. I've met with a couple of different fire departments that have full-time water rescue, about the pro- the process of what it means to get a water rescue team put together. I've spoken with Timmy, I've spoken with all the fire chiefs at our county fire meeting, and about getting together and building water rescue teams that can go out and do this stuff, because there were three instances last year, or since I have started, that we needed a boat, that we had to wait on somebody else to get there. So, we're looking at going forward with that. Everybody's approved it. We've just gotta, kind of gotta pursue, um, the training, facilitate the training, see what that's gonna cost, and the additional material it's gonna need for the boat. I don't, I think that's all I've got on new business. Everything else, I'll discuss whenever we get to the burn ban.
Okay. Anybody else with new business? If not, we move down to item number six, approved permission for savings from previous meetings.
Make a motion approve.
Approved.
Same exactly.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes. Okay, item number seven will be approved blanket POs for this week. And we have one for four hundred dollars out of S J F dash two to Fleet Court, four hundred. And we have one for sixteen hundred out of S J F dash two, performance foods. And then we have a thousand dollars out of S S F two to Fleet Court. So there'll be three blanket POs for this week, and I'll make the motion to approve.
I second it.
Call story.
Yes.
Same as that. Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number eight will be discussed, conservative issue of burn ban. How much rain did we get yesterday?
Not enough.
I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
It was, it was very, yeah, very small amount, very small amount. Uh, one thing real quick, I forgot to mention our new business. Uh, TalkTal Nation Emergency Management's got an initiative for economic recovery after disasters. They're gonna be coming into the county, they wanna speak to all the economic leaders, including the, the commissioners at the next chamber meeting. Because they, one of the big things after a natural disaster, or any disaster, you've got economic recovery. You see a lot of people who don't have insurance, have tarps on their stuff, you know, they, they wanna do, uh, an economic recovery assessment, and they wanna meet, give the initial meeting at the next chamber meeting. So, everybody here is obviously, you know, invited to go to that. Okay, on the burn ban, um, I'll just kind of get to what happened over this last week. Um, Friday at noon, Southside Fire received a page, to go one mile north on Tomahawk Road, you get there, and the wind is blowing, obviously, pretty bad. It jumped Tomahawk Road, got over, you know, on another piece of property, went up, went through on County Road twelve hundred, or rock, and started, and it got up against rocks. Hog barns that he's got right there, uh, threatened a couple houses, got right up to a couple houses. We had five fire departments respond to that. We had to block the road. County had to, like, Sheriff's Department had to block the road. That was because everybody was staging up on, on the road right there. That was the best place to stage up and refuel. We believe it got started, uh, somebody brush hogging, and either hit a piece of debris, a rock, something, and, uh, it just got out of hand with the fire, or with the wind that was going the way it was. Wanna thank, uh, Sandra and her guys that showed up with the road grader, and, uh, and Dozer. They were building, uh, fire breaks running through there. And glad the Dozer was there, because road grader got stuck, and two fire trucks got stuck out there, which is crazy. But the fire was that bad, but we had trucks getting stuck. Uh, while we were out there, Tomahawk got paged out to another fire out at Lone Star. And that fire, uh, got two houses, a trailer house, or not trailer house, um, a camper, brand-new camper, several vehicles. Uh, that one was off in the mountains. We just had to let that one burn, and for, you know, provide defensive measures and do back burns against it on, uh, up against those houses, to try and get the things, and get into the houses, cause any more structure damage. Uh, about eleven-thirty, we were still there, about eleven-thirty, Southside gets another page out, um, to go south on eighty-two, fire gets out, and it's down there on eighty-two, kind of over on Dixon Flats. And, uh, where a controlled burn had gotten out, looked like, you know, the mountain was, had been set on fire, and then it got out in some flats right there, and so, um, we were out till about three-thirty Saturday morning. Southside Fire was out for fifteen hours straight, from going from call to call. There was no break for those guys. So I, I gotta say, I mean, good job by all the fire departments, and thank Sandra and your guys, and, um, and the Sheriff's Department coming out and helping where, where they could. Um, all that being said, it is my high recommendation that we go ahead and pass a burn ban until we get a little bit of green grass and enough moisture to warrant taking this thing off, because even though there's some low spots that have water, where we're even getting stuck in right now, there's so much fuel still on the ground, that dry grass still on the ground, it's still posing a significant hazard, so.
I make a motion on number eight.
We don't have an exact count on the acreage yet, but we know it was several hundred acres that burned.
Same exactly, yes.
Yes.
Item number nine will be discussed, consider approving February monthly report for Court Flex Office.
Make a motion approve it.
I'll second it.
Parker, fair.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes.
Same as that. Yes.
Item number ten will be discussed, consider, discussed, consider approved. Say it's not approved, signing a resolution for liquor by the drink.
The DA has, uh, wrote this up, the Assistant DA, and, uh, there are dates in there to be filled out. Do you want to have September first, Karen? It can be, it can be the three days after the election, or it can be sixty days after, which will be, I think, September first, if I'm not mistaken. First election's on the twenty-sixth, and if it passes, and then, I think it was like sixty-three days till September first, for it going to effect, believe. But they still have, some of them, if it passes, they've still licensing everything they have to get to make it legal.
This is what we talked about. You're gonna look at it, talk this, we, we discussed it, and it's word for word what we talked about.
So what date do we, if it passes, what date do we want on there? Sixty?
I just put it on the gene, like. So I get it, it'll be on the gene election, but it'll go into effect.
You want it to go Fri- uh, like Tuesday's three days after it can go on then, or we can put it out sixty to ninety days?
I don't, I mean, I've never done one of these, but.
I was thinking that guy said it had to be sixty.
Well, and then I talked to Joe again, and he said different.
He did tell us sixty days.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And that's what I was going after, and it will be sixty-three days as of September first. So that's just up to what we agree on.
What, yep.
I say go for the sixty days.
That's what I thought, too. I'd go sixty days.
It'll be on September first of two thousand eighteen. I make a motion that we send this to for the ballot for the election.
I'll second that.
Same as that.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes.
Parker, fair.
I'll second that.
Same as that.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes.
Parker, fair.
Karen, you'll need to put your seal on this one. I don't know if you're right in the dates there.
Now Sandra, if I understand correctly, on the liquor by the drink, if it does not pass, then consumers won't be able to buy beer at convenience stores as well. They'd only be able to go to liquor stores to buy beer, because beer is considered a three-point-two, but three-point-two in the state of Oklahoma is gone after this last state election.
Right.
So, that's, that's how I understood it.
Yes.
So, in this election, if, if it fails, they don't sell beer in convenience store no more?
Period.
That's correct.
Cause it's six point z- si- it's six point.
Oh, cause it's all gonna be.
It's all gonna be six point.
Not gonna be no three.
Not gonna be any three point. And you can't.
First I've heard of that.
That's how we, that's how I've understood it from Mr. Daniels with, with the.
And if it does not pass, it'll be two years before we can do it again.
Yes.
We could lose a lot of revenue.
Yes, we can, and that's a lot of what, uh, commissioners guess they're funding from the, awesome. So it's.
Well, it's, it's gonna be on the ballot, so.
Beer, beer will still be available, it just won't be so convenient.
Right.
It'll be available at liquor stores owners.
Okay. Moving down to item number eleven, discuss, consider same resolution as per most from the general revenue capital out of account in the gross revenue capital improvement to pay twelve thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and forty-three cents from March two thousand eighteen bond, as the county public facility authority.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
Parker, fair.
Yes.
Same as that.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve, we assign appropriation, change first to appropriation, check received POs.
Tim, did you get double call slip twice on your phone?
I don't think someone would've said that. I don't think we got, I don't think we got that one, no.
And get that uh.
And that's a bit like cheaper.
No beer yet.
Well, I mean, I guess now it's my summertime, but it's a lot better than thirty-four or five hundred.
Yeah.
What about the wheel railers?
This one wasn't actually.
I don't know. I don't know, do you see?
No.
That'll work. Yeah, alright, good. Yeah.
Hi.
Do you know where this is? You got it there?
Well.
Check that side. I'm over. Yeah. It's gonna be too complicated. Oh. There's a three, cause it's, cause it's like. Uh. Four. You know, you know, it's like that. Thank you. Thank you guys. I'm gonna make a nation. So. I'm over. Too many. I'm over. I'm over. I'm over.
I'll make a motion on number twelve. Also. Same as I said.
Yes.
Fourth three.
Yes.
Yes.
Bottom number ten is to the jury.
Most urgent.
No second thought.